...collected. Looking ahead, we are sponsor of the upcoming cardboard boat race. We look forward to seeing a lot of people at that event. You can keep up rest of our efforts and results at www.ccolf.org, on Facebook, on our Claremont Chain of Lakes Foundation page, and by joining Claremont Chain of Lakes Boaters and Floaters page. The red refreshments tonight are compliments to the foundation. Please enjoy them. When we formed our foundation, engaging the public and encouraging local government to work with and inform citizens in the direction they are taking was a large part of the goal we set for ourselves. We've seen this effort come to fruition in recent public dialogue and presentations concerning the boating center location and design. We encourage all of you to be aware and informed of what your council, commission, and authorities are doing, planning, and spending money on. As we have found, they are very responsive to engagement and comments. After all, they work for us. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight, braving the conditions that came up on us quickly. To the candidates, thank you, and especially to fellow citizens of Claremont and surrounding areas. We know that you candidates for office have very busy schedules, both on the campaign trail and in your personal and professional lives. Thank you for giving us your time and expressing your views and goals. And last but not least, I want to thank the city for having such a nice facility to host these events. The upcoming election is very important to us all. We encourage you all to become informed and aware and to come out and vote in every election, primary and general. Your votes count and will be heard. Tonight's forum will be in two parts. First, we will be bringing up the candidates for the city and county seats that are contested, that is, more than one person vying for the position. When that portion is finished, we will be inviting other candidates for uncontested seats to come up and address us with their goals and accomplishments. The second part is no less important than the first. Please stay to hear them as well. Following the last presentation, we hope to have a generous amount of time for you to all meet again with the candidates and discuss issues on a one-to-one basis. Please be advised, we must be cleaned up and cleared out of the building by 9:30, so while you're chatting, we may be gathering and storing chairs and tables and presentation materials in order to meet that deadline. At this time, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Steve Hannah, who will be your moderator for the discussions. He will go over goals and ground rules, and then begin calling the candidates up to the front for their question and answer period. Please be courteous, keep conversations quiet, and refrain from speaking out while they are talking until the open portion of their time is announced. And for heaven's sake, mute those cell phones. Thank you again for coming. Steve?
Thanks, Steve. And thanks to our candidates as well for coming tonight. I know everybody's busy, and I've heard from several of the candidates that they're conflicting events and had to make some hard choices about where to be, so I'm happy that they chose to be with us here tonight. Before we get started, I have a few ground rules that were given out to the candidates. Here they are. And these should apply to all of us as well. We would ask all speakers to refrain from any personal attacks and maintain civil discourse at all times. Also, all of the speakers, and that would include those who have an opportunity to ask questions at the end, that is, the audience, we would ask you to comply with a one-minute time limit on asking or answering a question. That way, everybody has a chance to be heard. I know that's not going to be easy, and so we have a timekeeper here in the front row, and she has some colored plates. We want to hold those up so everybody can see. So there's a green one, that means you're all good to go. A yellow one, you're running out of time. And a red one, you're out of time. Don't make me cut off the mic. We have someone video recording the candidates forum tonight, and the Chain of Lakes Foundation reserves the right to distribute these recordings. I think they're going to be made available on YouTube, right? Okay. A little public meeting, that makes sense. The moderator, that's myself, may ask some follow-up questions to the candidates at any time, and I do reserve the right to intervene if I feel that's necessary, but I hope that's not going to be necessary. All right. Now, with no further ado, I'm going to call up our candidates for the city council. And the way we're going to do it tonight, we figured first focus on the city council, and then, especially because the county positions, some of them had to be up on the north side of the county at 6:30, and they're probably tangling with that storm getting down here, we'll do the county positions afterwards. And in each of these, we have a few set questions that we've agreed upon in advance, and then we'll throw it open for you to ask questions as well. So could we have up here the candidates for city council first, Gail Ashar, mayor? Thank you, Gail. Feel free to applaud. I think that would be appropriate. Everybody, whether they're an incumbent or a challenger, they've taken the time and effort necessary in order to run for this position. They deserve our applause. Jack Cruz, also running for mayor. And Keith Mullins. Keith. Keith is running for mayor also. Good three-way race there. Wow. That means there's going to be a primary. Could we have running for seat five in the city council, Emma Nsue.
I did.
I did? Oh, good. The first and maybe the hardest job of the night. All right. I'm going to give you a mic here. Check that's working? Okay. Fantastic. So as I mentioned, we're going to start with a couple of set questions. These were sent out to the candidates in advance, so I had a chance to prepare. And then you'll get a chance to ask questions and spring some surprise ones on them. The first question, and I think this is appropriate for any of these offices, is what are your goals and priorities? Mayor, would you like to start?
My priorities are based upon my goals, which are to enrich and improve the lives of our residents. That can be accomplished by protecting our natural environment and attracting new businesses and events to our city. At the same time, we need to maintain all the qualities that make Claremont such a special place to live.
Thank you. Jack?
My priority, obviously, being in law enforcement is, I'm going to be tough on crime. Safety of the system, safety of citizens is probably the most important thing. You need to know that your town is a safe place to live. We need to make sure we keep a handle on taxes. No more tax increases. We've seen things ratchet up slowly but surely every year, and we need to make sure we keep a handle on that. Need to watch what we're spending our money on, make sure that what we're spending it on is correct and necessary. And finally, need to protect our environment, make sure what we're building, the land that we're using, because we can't get it back, is the right thing for the city and for the future residents.
Thank you. When we first moved here in eighty-eight, it took about two hours without groceries and products, because there was a conversation in every aisle. We were one huge community that did a lot of hugging and sharing and smiling at one another, and it seems like we've gotten away from that. So my priority is to get us back into that friendly mood and remind everybody we're one big community, all living together, all trying to achieve the same goal. And one of those goals is jobs for our children. We used to export our children because there were no jobs here. Slowly, there have become more and more jobs to Claremont, but we don't need just retail jobs, we need career jobs, so our children don't have to drive to Orlando to get a decent paycheck. And then they need to have an affordable house here in Claremont where they can afford to raise their children in a nice community. And I'll give credit to Ray Dilly, because I heard from him, quality of life starts with a good paycheck.
Well, for me personally, being able to create a city that's accessible to everyone is key. You know, it doesn't matter who you are, whether you're a city councilman or a short-term renter who's living here in an apartment, you know. Creating a council in a city that is, that has simple, simple government, effective decisions, accessible leaders, and a transparent city council allows everybody to have a seat at the table and allows everybody to, you know, speak on what they believe in, you know. And if there's an issue, or you know, if there's a concern that they want to have or want to express, I want to be able to let everybody speak about it and let everybody talk about it as well. And I think you definitely hit it on the nail, hit the nail on the head when it comes to creating an environment for young people to actually want to move back here, whoever grew up here and knew to thrive. So I'd say those are, those are my goals.
Well, here is a second question. This is one that's near and dear to our hearts, Chain of Lakes Foundation. How can we improve people's experiences with the lakes?
To improve people's experience with our lakes, we have to provide an environment that draws people to them. We have to make them easily accessible and provide reasons for people to use them. At the same time, we have to ensure that they are protected. Our Victory Point project highlights all of these issues. It maximizes the quality of water entering our lakes and the use of our lakefront. It creates a wetland marsh system that will filter stormwater naturally and keep pollutants from entering Lake Minneola. This project has also created an eco-friendly urban park and a special beach for water events, staging areas and event venue for concerts, and an observation tower been built, walking and biking trails, excuse me, that help people to connect to the coast-to-coast trail. All of these elements draw people to and enhance their experience with our beautiful Lake Minneola.
I think their experience on the lake begins with access. Obviously, what's happened the past year with the boat ramp, I'll call it a debacle. Something that never should have happened, but it did. I'm glad we finally got that right. Being relocated to the Bell Suranic site is the proper place for it. That should be a good facility, and I thank Steve for the work he did on helping design that. To fully enjoy the lakes, not only you have to have access, but you have to have these niche events that really make the events, make the lake what it is. The cardboard boat race that you guys have coming up is awesome, the sailboating, the crazy little things that happen out there, the, I'm not sure what they call that, the Hawaiian kind of boats that they do, those kind of things. That's what, to see people actually enjoying the lakes, that's what we really need. But it starts with access, and it starts with people being able to do the events that they want to do.
I think there's two things. Number one is cleanliness. Fifty years from now, most of us will be gone, but the lakes will still be here. So everything we do, we have to think about what happens to the lake for my grandchildren. That's why over my years on city council, we were all about cleaning out the lakes with swales. Eventually, we went to the Victory Point project, what, back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, that got rolling. It's always been about protecting the waterway. Number two is access. Waterfront Park, well, J.C. Beach turned into Waterfront Park with the beautiful pavilions down there, and now the master plan, the promenade, it's all about access, but it's also people who live on the lake should have a nice view of what's on the lake. I'm a canoe person, so there's rowing people, there's speedboat people, and we all have to get along and respect one another, and they're useful. I think some of you even like to catch fish, but I'm a beef person.
So basically, just to reiterate what everybody else has said as well, accessibility is the main thing that'll help us with our lakes, you know, especially for, you know, young people and their middle-aged people who actually have families and, you know, actually want to get involved with the community and actually get active. You know, a lot of times, people don't really have as much of a reason to go to the lakes unless there's something going on. For me, it's more about creating an environment that actually allows people to go even when they don't have anything going on, just to admire the beauty and admire the natural glamour that Claremont has, you know. And credit to businesses that have started on the lakes, such as Lily's, that have just a beautiful view that allows you, you know, sit out there and actually eat and actually enjoy everything out here. So for me, it is mainly about accessibility and actually having a range of events and having a range of, you know, different events that people can have that come out there, you know, and not just, you know, athletics and not, not just, you know, boating and everything, but even if it's something like art or something like painting, something that just allows you to actually admire the natural splendor of our beaches.
Emma, why don't you hold on to the mic? Switch it around this time. Not getting everybody off base. Before we continue, I just want to make sure that proper credit is given. The cardboard classic, that boat race, we're not the organizers, we're just signed-on as sponsors. It's the great work of the Lake County Rowing Association, that they were the force behind that and still are. Flyers are at the table at the front, by the way, for that event, which sounds like a lot of fun, unless I'm the one who fall in the water. Maybe even that. All right. And the last question, last advanced question, and we'll throw it open for audience questions, is how will you balance economic growth with keeping Lake County beautiful?
There definitely needs to be a balance, you know, not just having growth for growth's sake or annexation for annexation's sake. You definitely need to take a look at what we're building. If it's necessary, is it going to bring profit to Claremont? But also, how's it going to affect the environment? How's it actually going to affect the look of Claremont? Because, you know, you can, you can put a bunch of profitable businesses in there, but if they're real ugly and they make everything else around them not so good-looking, people aren't going to want to go. You know, so for me, it's definitely taking a strategic spending, a strategic growth as well to, you know, every little thing that we do in there. And also, you need to make sure that if we are annexing, it needs to be something that will be positive for the environment, you know. And I don't know if that's whether we have to put in a clause where, you know, you have to build a tree or something else that has to, you know, benefit and make it look beautiful, but something along lines that would be great for Claremont.
Well, as you know, Claremont has some of the highest development standards for landscaping in the county. Quite a difference between developing in Claremont and developing outside of Claremont. Those have to be maintained, they have to be reviewed, residential and commercial landscape buffers, stormwater buffers, everything can be done to keep the plants green and the stormwater from running to the lakes with pollutants. I'm a fan of zirescaping. I, you know, St. Augustine's pretty, but let them grow it up north somewhere. We need to work with the native plants that love to live here in the book Florida and will live on the rainfall they get from Mother Nature and just get back to natural Florida instead of trying to make this Kentucky. You know, we moved to Florida because we like Florida, so let's embrace it. It can all be protected, but what works on flat land doesn't necessarily work on the hill, so every now and then, the city's going to have to put their hat on and come up with a creative solution.
My family's been here since the mid-nineties, and the growth we've seen going from eight thousand or so residents to almost forty thousand residents now, it's been primarily residential. I think the problem we have is that focus on residential building has really taken a lot of our landscape that we can never get back. I think if we, we want to do anything with the city now, we have to develop the commercial corridors in responsible, commercial, and professional businesses that bring in the right tax dollars, and we need to slow down the growth of the residential development. I don't think we should take every five and ten acre plot and divvy it up into track homes. I think we've had that long enough, I don't think we need to do that. I would take the cue from Minneola's mayor and do what they're doing. Just pause, look at what we're doing, let things catch up before we move ahead.
I've been here since ninety-eight, so it's been a while. And in that time, I've seen Claremont be designated the best place to retire, the best place to live, the best place to start a business, and ecologically also, it's been dignified in standings. And I think, I don't know why people moved here, whether, why they decided to live to Clare, in Claremont, whether it was the hills, whether it was the lakes, whether it was just the location, but whatever it is, people are coming here, and more and more businesses are coming here. And I had my coffee with the mayor, the list I handed out was, last month, was forty-one new businesses already started or coming. So we've got lots of businesses coming in and existing structures in most instances and existing laws, but we do have to balance that, and we can do that like at Wellness Way, where a portion of the land is set aside for our homes, portion for business, and portion for green space. We have to keep, let people keep staying for the reasons they came here originally and not see that destroyed.
All right. Now, I'm going to hand over my mic to Bob. You're going to, he's going to take it around, and we're going to have a chance for you to ask some questions. I'd ask you to keep in mind those ground rules, and this is not an opportunity to just talk and talk and talk, you, you'd have to keep it to a minute and preferably just a few sentences as well, because we came here to give candidates and not the audience per se. And please, no more than one question per person until everybody else has had a chance.
I just run faster, that's all, so.
Hi, I'm Cookie Whitehead, and I've been here since nineteen eighty-one. And the first thing I did was get involved in the community, and I have been involved thirty-seven years. I've seen two members that have been active in the community, visible in the community, but then I see two that I have never seen. I have been thirty years going to city council meetings, and I am on right now the planning of the city. What made you come in, not being involved in the city, to take the mayor's spot?
I guess I was too small or anybody. I am not, yeah. Two.
Yeah, I said, I said like it was directed towards.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, for me, just to, just to make sure, you know, I'm actually running for seat five, not for the mayor's position. Yep. So for me, you know, I've lived in Claremont since two thousand and two. You know, I am only twenty-four, so I have a bit on the younger side, but, you know, I've grown up here, I've gone through the education system here, Cypress Ridge Elementary, Claremont Middle, Eastridge High, you know, this was home, you know. I've spent many long nights running, you know, running around these streets, running around Claremont, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a place that has all, that I've always wanted to come back to. After I, after I graduated high school, I actually went off to Florida State University and, you know, went ahead and studied there, and even after I graduated, I went off to Washington DC to work in legislation and policy to, to actually get a hand in the work that actually affects the people. And at the federal level, I've seen what's happened, and I've seen how it kind of works, but for me, I've always been, I've always cared more about the local level, you know, because these are the issues that actually affect the people in front of me. They talk a lot about the federal level, but the local level is what my heart has been set on for a while, and that's why I decided to actually come back and get involved.
I'll say, I've been a police officer for ten years in this town. If there's any more serving than that, I'd, I'd challenge someone to tell me how I can serve any more than that. When I moved here, I could have retired, I was ready to retire. I'm, I'm a police officer because I want to serve, because I want to help the people. I'm doing it not for the money, there's not a lot of money in being a police officer, certainly not for the aggravation or the, or the stress on my life and, or my wife's life. I do it because I want to serve, because I want to help people. And I'm retiring in two months, and I want to continue to serve this city. I love this city. I'm active in this city, I'm everywhere. I'm on the lakes, I'm on the trails, I'm on the roads, I'm everywhere, and I've met a lot of people in, in the twenty years or so I've been here, and I want to serve them, and I think I have a lot to offer because of my involvement in the community on the very ground grassroots level. So it's not a job, the mayor isn't a job, it's a call, it really is. I'm sorry? I do live in the city, I live far from here. Come over, come over to my house.
All right, all right.
Lemonade.
So do we have someone else who wants to add a question? Just raise your hand, push one down.
To three of them, I'm no stranger and have been very vocal at the council and trying to keep our candidates accountable to the citizens, to our newest candidate, I'm not high on Charlie Ford, looking at.
Nice to meet you.
I actually had other questions tonight, but, and by the way, this is not a personal attack. You know that you are accountable for rules and regulations and that you're not above the law like any other citizen, right?
Use the microphone, please.
It has come to the, okay. You did, you did. It has come to the attention, so I, I came tonight, that there was problems with campaign signs. One of them, Mr. Mullins, I'll see you later, we have the pictures, and you have Keith Mullins, mayor of Claremont, and to all due respect, she's the mayor. You have to have the word "Ford," so I did call Tallahassee today. You are in violation, so I turned it in under my name, and then there are some in the right of way. We do have other candidates that their signs are in the right of way, so how do you answer to the public when you, you don't follow those rules, but yet you have to account for the rules that you're going to be elected to? And I really mean this in very serious business. I, I want to know, because some young people that were doing political science, this came to me, and they called me because they knew I wasn't afraid to ask anything. And this is something that we see all over the country. How do you answer this to the public when you have, and I have these, so I can give them to you later. Mayor, you need to go check too, some of your signs, I think, are in the right of way, they're right on curves and stuff.
Don't cry the cross.
Yeah, no, I know, but there are, anyway, so, and I don't know, Mr. Cruz, I think you need to check too, but for all candidates, how do you answer the public when you have this going on and you're not checking and doing your due diligence that we have faith in you, that you're going to be able to do your due diligence on the council? It's a fair enough question.
Who are you directing this?
To, to everyone. If you're in campaigns, you have signs, we've already signed violation today.
I know that my signs were put out by someone who does this for a living, and I know they're not in a violation.
I know my signs are in compliance, I'm, I'm, I'm a business guy, I'm an accountant by trade, I'm not an inficker. I place most of the signs myself, and if they're in violation, I take responsibility to that and I'll go out and move it. So some have to, just give me a call and I'll take care of it. But I know my signs themselves are printed properly, I can't control them if the lawn guy moves it, but I'll be happy to fix anything that would not be correct.
And I, and I know some, my early artwork had "For Mayor," and somewhere it got changed, I like the kind I want, but I can fix it. It's, it's an honest mistake. As far as location, I haven't put any in the media like them, but if somebody has moved it, I, I know it wasn't me, it may have been enthusiastic volunteer, but we'll fix it.
A lot of them were found today, so just saying it's all right. Does it, do you have accountability to the public?
Well, yeah, it's, of course we're accountable. In fact, we have to be extremely careful and do things above and beyond because we are in the public eye so much. But it will all be fixed if, if there's any problems. I'll find out.
Yeah, well, do you have a little idea what you're saying?
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for actually bringing that up, you know. Just as we as elected officials and people who want to run should be transparent and accountable, it's on the citizens as well to bring it up and to actually bring it back to us. So I thank you for that. You know, if my signs were in, you know, say, the wrong way or somewhere they shouldn't have been, I take full responsibility for that, and I can go move them. In fact, the first day, actually, I got a call from the city that said, hey, you know, one's at the, one's at the wrong spot, you might need to go move it, and immediately I went and we remedied the situation. So I do understand where you're coming from, and I think it's very important.
Our next question's right here.
Yeah, I've got two hats on, one-
One is I'm going to be speaking later as a candidate, but I'm an interloper from Taveries and write a blog on fiscal issues in the county. And one thing that always comes up is budget. So I thought I'd just ask the general question to throw out to you, is what are the budget?
What's your name?
My name's Vance Yoakum.
Okay.
And the, from FiscalRangers.com, that's a plug. And so, the question would be, what are the budget challenges that you see coming in the future for the city?
Yeah.
Should have asked them if they read the budget.
There's the, I had to sit into the preliminary meeting, nice money, I believe, for the city budget. And the city sent a staff report, preliminary. They look pretty good for this year, no increases or anything. But there's a, there's an item on the ballot in November that would extend the homestead exemption for people. If that passes, Claremont will have $600,000 less money next year than they have this year. So staff and council will be charged with how do they come up, how do they provide the quality services, the police and fire, that you want with less money? And this has happened before, and it took the city years to get back up to the budget level and service level there was. So it's come up again, that's probably the biggest challenge coming up on the horizon, is that validation in November.
My focus would be on, you have to have a balanced budget. You can't dip into reserves, and you want to do the rollback rate when it comes to budget time. So you want to keep things balanced and even. Problem is, we have some things coming up, for instance, the school resource officers. That's going to cost us several hundred thousand dollars. We have to eat that this year. Next year, we're hoping to get funding for that, but it won't necessarily happen. You never, you don't know what's going to happen in the future. I agree completely with what Keith said. The main thing is, you don't know what's going to happen down the road, but we do know we can tighten our budget, we can tighten our belts. We can make sure that we don't spend needlessly on projects that aren't necessary. And there should be money to be found there.
She wants to last say. Yeah, but I too believe in a balanced budget and putting a little bit of a squeeze on spending. I mean, when you look at it, we've done a great job so far, but we are still in debt, and we still need, there's still a lot of work to be done. You know, a lot of people have talked about how Minioles has put a whole on amnesty, and how we would like to do that as well, some people would like to do that as well. But in order to do that, we're actually going to have to work a little bit on the debt that we've accrued and kind of work towards it, chip away as much as we can. So I think having a balanced budget would be great, and actually taking a little bit of a squeeze on spending.
We end up in debt for large projects like Victory Point and for major construction in the city. All of that is factored into our existing budget. Our budget rate, our military rate has not gone up for three years, and this is going to hold the same for this coming year. Every single, if you come to council meetings, whenever an issue is brought up, there's extensive discussion whether to go ahead. Now Victory Point was millions of dollars. But then we ended up getting a lot of funding from different groups. And that's what the city tries to do in most instances. If we do have a large project like that, or we have, we turn to federal government, state government, county government, and organizations to get funding to help pay for these very large projects that we have going on in the city. Invariably, we have not touched reserves for years now. So we must be budgeting it right. We're providing outstanding police, outstanding fire department, outstanding every department, our environmental services with everything they're doing. We, all of our departments are functioning at a very, very high level. And we're still staying with the same military rate, so we've got to be doing something right with the budget.
Hi, my name's Chris Davis, I'm a county resident. I live on 10302 Lake Neowash Shore. And the question I have is, and I've been coming to the council meetings for about a year now, mainly because of the boat ramp issue that was brought up, that was brought up in July of 2017. And I'm not picking on you just to ask, because you were the only one, it was part of those meetings, these gentlemen, I think Mr. Mullins was for a short time. But the question I had was, at a December workshop meeting, a quote you made, and I remember the quote, it said, "The quality of our lakes means everything. Without it, we are nothing." And I remember, I wrote that quote down, I don't know if you remember that quote or not.
No, but I think I.
It was Mr. Good getting your speeches there, Mr. Mullins. But eight days later, eight days later, you voted to rip out one hundred sixty-nine vital pieces of land, one hundred sixty-nine dump truck loads of vital wet material out of the preserve to put in the boat ramp. This was eight days later, and I just don't understand. And the question's not directed at you, but everybody here is, is when you say one thing, and then in a short time later you reverse that, I mean, that's not showing your character in city government. And I had a problem. I don't know if you remember the boat ramp issue December 12th, when you voted.
Why?
For the preserve. And then I remember Mr. Perry emphatically saying to all you all up there, saying, "This is not a place you want to put the boat." And I felt like he was on trial. You don't remember that, no? I do. You can check the city.
I'm glad you do. But since, what was that, December of what year?
I look, it's 2017.
2017. Since then, I voted along with other council members to put it at Lake Hiawatha Preserve based upon the information that we were given in reference to the county approving the site and our own engineers and consultants approving the site?
I mean, you're all, the engineers did not?
Excuse me, yes, they did. And it was when the county, when it was challenged, that the county didn't back up what it had given us as information, then we pulled that, okay? So it was a matter of the voting, every voting that takes place at the council is based upon the information we're given, okay? And at that point in time, the information I was given was that that was not damaging to our environment. They were going to clean it out, they were going to clean up the lake shore along that point. That's the information I was given.
But what information were you given by?
I'm saying, by our consultants.
But, but Lake County Water.
Chris, sorry, I don't know if you were here when I laid out the ground rules.
Well, I just have a conversation.
I know, it's fine to have a conversation afterwards, but right now we're in the question.
Okay, I'm sure.
Ask a question, and then let the candidates answer it. And if somebody else wants to ask another question, they can go ahead and do that. But I wonder if any of the other candidates want to address this issue.
I do, I had something to say about that, and I wanted to bring something. People who have boats probably know what this is. And I'm going to guess that I'm probably the only one sitting up here that has one of these. Doesn't mean that you need to have one of these to vote, but it means that you're a serious voter. You're actually on the lake, you're doing things. I've launched a boat a hundred times from our boat ramp, more so on the whole road. I use the lakes, I ski on the lakes, I fish on the lakes. There's a different perspective when you have a decision to make about the boat ramp, about Hiawatha Preserve, and what you're going to do with it if you actually use the facilities. And I got the feeling, sitting in the audience, and one of the reasons I'm running is based on this very thing. I got the feeling that people in the council didn't have any idea what they were doing because they don't use the facilities. And you can't make that important decision, you're going to cut off boat, lake access to all these voters for over a year, and then go plow over a preserve, by nature, a preserve, that's what it's called. How can you do that? Obviously, something's missing there. And I sat in the audience, I just shook my head, I said, if I was thinking about involving, this put me over the edge, and that's exactly why I'm here tonight.
Now, I, five people sat on the council, business owners like me, school teachers like the mayor, retirees like Mr. McGee. And we're probably very knowledgeable in our career, case officer, accountant, real estate. Comes to lake, science. I know my canoe floats on the top, and there's fish underneath. The only question that should have been asked about the rope boat ramp is what is best for the water? What I saw from the audience was arguing about the west side and the east side. But nobody stood up and said, "What's best for the lake?" And I think eventually, we settled on the best site for the lake. But you have to remember, those five people are not experts, and they have to rely upon staff and consultants. And if the consultant is not being totally upright or forthright, and like Miss Ashen was back in October, September, October, when the city was ready to award the contract to build the boat ramp, the county and St. John and Lake Water Authority did a 180 on the city and shocked staff and council at that meeting. So there was no secret meetings, there was nothing to destroy the lake. The city was blindsided. And it took a long time, like, I think debacle was the best word somebody else used. And I think the city worked it out, and I think a good solution's come to. But there was a lot of interesting meetings.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it wasn't the original plan to have them over at Bell Ceramic? And then after, correct me if I'm wrong again, but we actually had the Water Authority come in and speak to the council and the rest of the staff. And they were all in unison and said that this would be the correct, the best decision. So for me, I think it kind of, it kind of boils down to actually communicating, not just with citizens, but other intergovernment agencies, you know? Whether it's the county, whether it's the state, whether it's, you know, any other type of authority, being able to actually communicate with them, kind of increase our rapport to actually benefit the citizens is key. You know, if you would have asked anybody here, they would have loved to have it at Bell Ceramic instead of Hiawatha. And the fact that, you know, the decision was kind of taken for granted. And granted, you know, I wasn't in on any of those meetings, but still, the fact that it was taken for granted, it's, it was unfortunate. And like, you know, like Mr. Cruz said, it was a bit of a debacle. But, you know, I am glad now to see that they remedied, 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 sorry. And they're actually working towards a solution.
So we have a question in the bathroom?
Yes, my name's Libby Hannah, and I want to thank everybody again for coming tonight. We really appreciate your attendance. I love going to city council meetings and coming out for meetings like this. I think it's not the most fun we can have. But I have been told by some other people that there are other ways to have fun. And not everybody actually does want to. I guess, this is what people have told me. So, so, but seriously, there are people with small children or who work, you know, odd shifts or whatever, who can't make it necessarily to a council meeting or to a meeting like this. My question is, are there, do you have ideas about ways that we can try to get more people involved and get the information flow perhaps even better between officials and people in Claremont? Maybe new technology, old proven technology, just whatever your thoughts are on improving communication?
Definitely, and thank you for asking that question, it's a great question, you know? Especially for somebody like me who was working, at the time was working in DC, but who was still interested in this community and stuff that was going on. Although our website, our government website was great, there were a lot of times when I was looking for answers and I was kind of stuck. And for me, like I've said before, accessibility is key. And I think that we could definitely be able to livestream or archive, you know, our city council meetings, you know, our other planning and zoning meetings or other meetings of the sort like that, and actually have it either on Facebook, either on Google Play, any kind of website or online. Because a lot of times, you know, you look at the county, you look at the state, you look at even at the federal level, it's all livestreamed and recorded. You can go back, you can archive it, they have a transcript. You can look back and say, oh, they did say this, oh, they didn't say that. So actually, next time, if there is an issue on December 12th between somebody said something, oh, I have the transcript right here, you know, this is what happens. So I mean, for me, it definitely is possible, and I, you know, it doesn't have to be some fancy fancy, you know, type of program. You can have a tripod in the back with somebody on Facebook Live, or what Vance is doing right now.
Mount Dora does exactly that.
I'm old, but I'm not as old as Ann DuPuy was. Ann DuPuy used to own the newspaper, and she sat on the city council, and everything that happened at the city council was in the newspaper, and everybody read it. But they also read the daily commercial, they also read the cinema. The media quit covering local government. And now it's, it needs to be, you're right, the digital format and the younger people who like to look at everything on their phones is probably the way to go. But people are not as connected as they used to be. We used to read the paper and the funnies and everything, we knew what was going on in our community. And now it's digital, maybe, so, you know, it's getting the information to the people in a way that they want to receive it, nothing is on the other way. And I know there are citizens academies to get people trained and out. It'd be lovely if the school could teach civics again. People really don't understand how government works and who does what.
This is an easy answer, I completely agree with what Emo said.
I, when I first moved here, and I wondered, I moved from New York, you may have guessed where I came from with my accent. There were as many people living in Claremont as there were in the school district in which I taught. I said, my gosh, I've got to see what's happening, what is this city like, what's going on here? I started attending council meetings. Invariably, if you come to our council meetings, it's the same few people who come to every meeting. They are people that are also part of our departments, they are people that are involved all the time in the city as it is. There are very few people that really show up often, unless there's a major, major issue. It's the same people every council meeting. So what I'm saying is, if you want to know what's going on at a council meeting, get there! Show up! You not only will know what's going on, you can participate and have a say. You know, if, I'm sorry. Living by the world of a telephone in front of your face does not give you reality, I'm sorry. Show up, be there in person, listen to what's happening, have a say in what's happening. And that's how you get involved.
You have another question? Have another question?
Fred Stoudt, I've only moved here a couple of years, but I find that the, I find that the roads in what I think is the city are much needed repair. And in addition to that, most, every road that intersects with particularly State Road 50 has a left turn lane, straight ahead lane, and a straight ahead right turn lane. I've been told that some of the roads that I think are city roads are county roads. With the, with regards to State Road 50 thing, if somehow you could overcome whatever bureaucracy says that you have to combine the right turn lane with a straight ahead lane, would really relieve a lot of traffic. Citrus Tower backs clear up to Hook Street and beyond in the morning because the first guy there says, "Oh, I can go first," and gets in a straight ahead lane and keeps twenty, thirty cars from turning right on red. And I've been told that, oh no, that's out of our control. You're the ones that we take, that we think should exercise some force on the quote higher authorities and do what's reasonable for our community. Could you comment on any of this?
Sure, most of the roads you're talking about are not city roads. First of all, State Road 50 is a state road. Twenty-seventh is a federal road, so we have no control over that. If you take a look at Citrus Tower Boulevard, Hook Street, major thoroughfares throughout our city, they are not ours responsibility, they are the county's responsibility. I get many, many emails about responsibilities for litter on the roads or off the roads and so on, and invariably, it is not city streets. We do have, the city does have, if you go to the city, they do have a listing, a map, showing exactly which streets are city streets, and that will give you some clarification. If it comes to trafficking, whether you're making a right turn or a left turn or whatever, then you turn to the police.
You think you have a problem, you should try being in the police office, try and enforce the rules out there, jurisdiction, non-jurisdiction, we can write a ticket, we can't write a ticket. It's a mess, it's a mess. Especially when there's an accident, and you have a Claremont police officer there, and we can't handle the accident because we have to wait for the state police to get there because of some road jurisdiction protection. It's, it is a mess, it's difficult. But I will say, yeah, can we go out there and fix the problem from a city level? No, we can't, but we can ask, I understand what you're saying. We can ask the right people, that's about all we can do.
And for someone who just moved here, understanding everybody's in charge of something else, it sounds like we're passing the buck. And unfortunately, that, sometimes you feel that way. But I know Citrus Tower and 50, I mean, Citrus Tower was there, they scooted over and didn't put in turn lanes. They, I'm sorry, the county. Building roads is very expensive. Building roads is very expensive, the county doesn't have near enough money. And they'll, those five people rely upon their expertise years or reading books on how to design roads. And some of the things they come up with, I do not understand. City staff and city council people have lobbied the county commissioners for years. And they do what they can, but every now and then they can come up with a head scratcher. But we can just keep trying to work with the county to get the best roads we can.
I think it's pretty similar to what Keith said at the end, you know, and what I've been talking about before, just in improving the relationship between the county, whether it's on roads, whether it's on hot holes, whether it's on transportation, just improving the relationship that we have and actually trying to help, you know. If, like you guys said, if you see anything on the city, on the roads or anything, alert us, you know, we'll talk to them and we'll build a relationship that is actually beneficial for both of us and not just kind of, you know, passing the buck or blaming somebody else for an issue that might have come up on accident.
What you have to also realize is when these are not city streets, they're in the county or state or federal, there's an issue of funding. The county has limited funds to repair, to change streets, to add streets. They've been waiting for over two years, I'm sorry Sean, but we've been waiting for over two years for Harley Road to be extended down to Hartwood-Nosh Road. They don't have the funding. And that happens not only at the county level, but at the state level and the federal level. So that's one of the biggest issues with any of the roads, is there funding available to fix them? And in many instances, it's not there.
So I think we just have time for one or two more questions for the city council candidates, and then we'll move to our county candidates. Is there another question?
Oh boy. It's running.
That's running.
So we were one of those that we could not go to council meetings.
He holds mine.
Better. So we never thought council meetings were fun. We live here downtown, we didn't go to our first council meeting until we got one of those yellow cards in the mail that said there was going to be some zoning changes. And you've talked a lot here about how you rely on other people to make decisions. So we went through that problem, and actually, we're still going through that process of trying to shepherd the council to make the right decision. And one thing that's been glaringly obvious to us is it does seem like you are not getting the best information from your staff, from your engineers. You know, we have the clear perspective that nobody's watching the storm, right? We understand you're all elected officials, you're citizens, you don't, you don't come with any special knowledge or any superpowers. So tell us what you're going to do to address that problem, right? You can tie it to the boat ramp, right? We all keep saying bad information, so let us know what you're going to do there.
What's your name?
Kevin Kenna, 562 West Mill.
So if I get the question right, you're saying that the council as a whole gets all wrong information or a lot of wrong information, and as a result, we make bad decisions all the time?
No, that was the excuse for the boat ramp issue. I didn't, and so...
What do you give the mic to clarify?
So the boat ramp issue, like we said, all right, well, we got bad information from our engineer, we got bad information from this. You are just citizens, you don't have any special knowledge, you don't have any special training, so you really rely on your staff. Our observations going through the process so far is there are significant gaps in that capability. So let us know what you're going to do to improve the knowledge you get. How can you ensure that you are getting good information to make good decisions? You can't just say, well, we have bad information. You have to fix the problem.
If there's a problem. There was a problem in essence only because at the point after we approved the Lake Hiawatha site, the county did not back up the information they had given us. Now, when it comes to any of these decisions, we have, the city bids out to different engineering companies, architectural companies, and so on. And we take the best bids. And we do rely upon them to give us accurate engineering information, architectural information, and whatever we're paying them for. If I'm not an architect, if you are not an architect, if you're not an engineer, and if you were in a position of any of the council members, and you're paying a company to give you specific information on a project, you're paying them to do this. I should not pay any attention to what these people say? I have to. I'm not an engineer. So to blame us for paying attention to what our specialist information is given to us, I don't think is very fair or accurate. Because if you were in the same position, you would be doing the same exact thing. You would be basing your decision upon the expert's information that's being given. I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect, I depend upon them to do it.
Any project that comes before the city council has to pass the litmus test. It's got to be reasonable. Information comes before you from a lot of different sources. And I think what's happening, there's a certain amount of steering going on, and people are listening and hearing what they want to hear in order to develop the project the way they want to develop it. And I think if you look at the reality of it, you need to look at what is best for, whether it be the downtown or the boat ramp or whatever the project happens to be, the people that live around that and the needs of the city. I think we're listening too much to the developers, to the people that want to do certain things with the city and not listening to the people as a whole. And I'm hearing that, I'm seeing that, and that's why it's time for a change.
I think I answered your overall question. It sounds like you're having a personal issue with the downtown area. And that's a tricky area because you have land was developed 120 some odd years ago, and now it's transitioning. And the rules that are currently in place perhaps don't apply anymore. And staff is just trying to work with the rules they have. And there's an old saying, if the only tool you have is a hammer, you treat every problem like a nail. And unfortunately, that's what staff has sometimes, they go, this is the rule, you can't do that. And I've worked with other government agencies, I like to go a bit more of an attitude of scarcity. Let us help you plan your project within the guidelines of Claremont. And perhaps Claremont has to tweak some of the guidelines. Instead of playing 25 questions, yes, you can do it, no, you can't. Have a more engaging staff that allows you to help you do what you want to do up to Claremont standards.
So for me, I am a really big opponent of, I'm a really big candidate of performance based thing. So, you know, if you, if the citizens feel as though, you know, city staff or the council isn't doing anything that they should be, or, you know, it feels that they could be doing a better job, you need to take a hard look at that and actually reflect on it, you know. If people feel as though staff are kind of just taking things and just, you know, throwing them at the wall and seeing what sticks, they need to be evaluated for it, they need to be held accountable for it. And it's the same for the council as well. There shouldn't be a reason why, oh, we received bad information, or, oh, you know, this isn't going to work, or, oh, you know, there needs to be a reason why, there needs to be, you know, actual reflection on it and actual change, not just, oh, we'll fix it next time, or, oh, that's my bad, we'll do it again. Because after a while, it just becomes habit, and then after a while, it'll just snowball and snowball and snowball to, you know, to bigger problems.
Another question here?
Yes, my name is Logan. I just moved back to Claremont, just getting in the groove of everything. And I was just wondering, on the latter side of things, would it be any festivities on the scale of Pig on the Pond? Because I feel like a lot of the citizens that live here, you know, they appreciate something like that. So I'm just wondering, would there be any more upcoming events on the scale of that, bringing everybody together and getting to see how Claremont is such a melting pot, you know, such therefore, so.
Well, not currently on the council, I can tell you what I know from the side. The city's signature events are the 4th of July Red White Lagoon, which was fantastic last week. The next signature, big signature event tradition is the Light Up Claremont, which takes place downtown with the light of the tree, the Christmas parade, again, a wonderful two-day event. Well, the city events, I know the city and the chamber are partying with a salsa festival in September. But Pig on the Pond is private, the Caribbean Festival is private, the Harvest Festival, the Vintage Festival, the Wine Walks, the Farmer's Market, the Music on Montrose, the Food Trucks, that's all private enterprise. But I think it's, there you can correct me, that the ones that come to my mind as city events are 4th of July and Light Up Claremont. And if you like to run or ride your bicycle, there's tons of sporting events out there. Not, but just because it's not a city event, doesn't mean the city isn't involved. They do a tremendous amount of help for everybody.
No, you're very, your years of... Go ahead. Oh, okay. Yeah, I think that's the basic point of it, is that a lot of it is privately run, a lot of the big events are privately run. The city limits what it funds.
All right. I'll take it, I'll take it.
And I love how Logan kind of used the term melting pot. Because as you guys know, this is a city of 37,000 people. And not everybody does the same thing. Not everybody runs triathlons, you know, not everybody's in healthcare, you know. And we want, you know, as Logan pointed out, we kind of want the city to be more open for everybody, you know. Like I said, choice of champions, you know, we can be champions of everything. Healthcare, art, you know, running, triathlons, I mean, look at me, I can barely run, but I like watching it, you know. But even with anything else, entertainment, science, vocational training, I don't see why, there's no reason why, to me, there's no reason why Claremont couldn't be the champion of everything. And kind of involve all 37,000 people in the community to kind of get together and kind of to grow with each other, you know. A lot of times, people, when people think of economic development, they think of just money that's going in, but it's more so, you know, the actual amount of people who are here and actually enjoying things. Because if people enjoy being in the city, they're going to put more back into the city. And you look at young people, most of them are going to Winter Garden, most of them are going to Orlando. You know, if we took the young people here and actually spent back into the city, the city would flourish probably technically.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the getting off the stage and a quick side of relief question for you, and it's an easy one. So you get to go after this, and the question is very simple. And remember the rules of civility in this question, but I'll ask it for the YouTube audience and everyone else. In comparison to your opponents, why should people vote for you? Not the same answers that, you know, everybody's happy, we all want environment, we all want education, and we all want this. But specifically, why should voters vote for you instead of your opponents?
And obviously, like you said, no knock on my door at all, she's over next to the job. But I just want to be a freshman face in the city, somebody who's actually grown up here and is actually, you know, like I said before, running the streets and actually, you know, gone to school here. I just want to be a freshman face that actually cares about the city, and actually wants to help it grow and be a part of something, something bigger than myself. You know, public service has always been close to my heart, and it's something that's been instilled in me through my parents, through their hard work, hard work ethic, through seeing what they've done when they've immigrated here from Ghana, West Africa. And now I'm here, and I'm like, look, I've seen what they've done, I've seen how great a city this is, I've seen how great a state this is. I want to be a part of it, I want to do what I can, I want to be a freshman face that, you know, even if I don't agree with everybody, I still want to hear everybody out. Because positive change happens when everybody kind of listens to each other and has a good discussion on it, you know. Not necessarily debate, not necessarily, you know, just arguing, but just nice, positive, positive discussion. So that's basically it.
I seem to have that ability to ask the right questions, look at the big picture, and bring people from two sides together. Over the years, on council and other groups I've been in, when you're looking at a problem and you're arguing back and forth, I quite often have that one that says, well, wait a minute, why do we do this? You know, get out of the black and the white and get into the gray, and look at the big picture, and work towards what works for the community as a whole down the road. It just sort of meant, I know my degree is in marketing, but I've discovered I'm not really a salesperson. I'm a logistic person. Get all the pieces together, create the product, and get it out to go where the customer can give them what they want. So that's my sort of a talent, is getting all the pieces together. Not everybody's happy, but the majority gets together.
I spent the last 10 years of my career in place where making sometimes split-second decisions that are life and death, literally. I have 25 years experience with the council sitting on either side of the nation, and they still got the boat ramp wrong, very wrong. Experience isn't everything, it's being able to make the decision with the information that's in front of you and make an informed, correct decision. I just actually consider that.
I spent years on planning and zoning. I spent years as a council member. I spent four years as a mayor. And that gives me a tremendous experience background when it comes to all issues that we've had before the city. It's not a simple thing. And the hours that you put in, you better be dedicated to it. Because it doesn't mean you're only showing up on Tuesday, every other Tuesday, the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. You've got other meetings with that. I have made, my time as a mayor in the last four years, I am at every single event I can be at, especially for children, the veterans, and for the city itself. I usually put on approximately 180 miles a month just attending events. Some months, it's almost 300 miles. I'm involved in the city. I have coffee and conversation with the mayors the third Tuesday of every month, I'm sorry, the third Saturday of every month. Tuesdays, council meetings. I am reaching out to the citizens, they have reached out to me. I have been involved in the city, I have experience, the background in the city government. So I think I'm really the best candidate for the job.
And on that note, I'd like to leave a round of applause for all of our candidates. As noted earlier, we will have time at the end of this session for you to make some makele and get a chance to talk to them one-on-one, which I'm sure will be invaluable. But now we're going to move on to the county positions, the folks that we have here tonight who are in contested elections. I'm going to call them up one by one so you know who's who, and then we will have time for a question and answer. I would ask you, if you want to have a conversation, once they all get up here, if you want to have some conversation, follow the questions and answers, please take that in the hallway outside. Okay. So our first county candidate is Sean Parks, who's running for Lake County Commissioner, District Two. Yes, please. And now we have three candidates who are running for the Lake County Water Authority. We have Casey Griffin. Casey? Vance Yogan? And Susan Feder. All right, fantastic. Thank you, folks, for coming. And I'm sorry we couldn't have every possible candidate for all of the county positions. We talked about it, the school board and the this and the that, we couldn't fit them all up here, so we had to come up with some criteria. All right. Now, I think, well, you were all here earlier, except maybe Sean. Sean, I'm not going to read the ground rules because they were in the letter, and you got the letter and you looked at the letter. But here's how we're going to work it, we'll work it the same way as last time. I'll ask these three advanced questions for each one, you each get a minute to answer it, no more than a minute. And I will say, I thought that with perhaps a few small exceptions, the city council candidates did a great job of keeping their answers under a minute. So that is not easy, as any of us who have stood up in front of city council, and they give us a couple minutes at least. It's hard to keep it at three, sometimes two, but usually three. It's hard to keep and be so succinct, so thank you for that. Sean, here's the mic. I'll describe the first question, and just send it on down after you answer. First question is what are your goals and priorities?
First of all, let me thank you for hosting this event tonight. I want to definitely recognize my family, my wife Ivy, my daughter Reagan, and my son Eli. Willow's not with us tonight. With everything that's going on, I'm making sure where she is. Where is she? Volleyball. She's at volleyball tonight, so she could not join us. To answer the question, you know, principles and goals and priorities, everybody knows this book, have you seen this book? This is the Claremont Gym of the Hills. This is The Claremont Gym of the Hills. And in the book, the authors of this book must have thought something really special of Claremont and South Lake, because they wrote this book, and as I quote them, saying, as a gift to the future. And so my priorities are to make sure that what I do as a county commissioner contributes to what I hope will be the next book, and something that's positive, whenever that book is written. That is exactly what my priorities do, is what my focus is. My focus is on making Lake County and doing, making decisions based off the future for my kids and for all residents, not for some particular group or some particular party. How I do that is by promoting protection enhancement of quality life, you know that I'm very passionate about that issue. Water Resources Protection, which I know we will get into tonight, particularly focusing on some stormwater infrastructure issues coming in the future, our roads, and I'd be happy to answer all the questions that you have about roads tonight, and then public safety. Police and fire, we must continue to support our police and fire, if more and more people come into Lake County, we've got to make sure that they're supported. And my time is up. Thank you.
Pass it on down there.
Hi, I'll do it. Goals and priorities for me are pretty simple. They run in line with the Lake County Water Authority's mission, which is to conserve and protect our freshwater resources, to provide recreational facilities and education, to improve our aquatic ecosystem and our environment, you know, all to better our community. And that's exactly what I wanna do. I want to make the right decisions with the water management, with the Water Authority to better our community here in South Lake County.
Well, I'm Van Choken, I moved here 12 years ago from California, so I can tell you how California would do it. But I'm not going to, I moved onto a lake, I'm off of Lake Dora on one of the canals. I've seen the algae blooms, I see the many of the wildlife. I have a Facebook page, I have probably 30 pictures of different songbirds and different wildlife that I've all seen in my backyard on the canal. And so I wanna work towards that. Now, I've been a fiscal watchdog blogger for 12 years, going to county board meetings. Sean knows me well, he's happy that I'm not asking him questions right now. And he can ask me questions, sure. And the, and I've been writing a blog, and I take videos of a lot of these meetings and upload them. But my background is, I was a corporate auditor in many large corporations, and I wanna use that analysis skills to look at that. I fully understand the budget, I went to the recent budget meeting for the Lake County Water Authority. And actually, they do a pretty good job with their budget. And, but to be able to then use that information and work towards legislative issues, because in the role of my blog role, I've met all, I know all of the people who are running or are incumbents in the Lake County, Florida, the Florida Legislators Delegation, as well as the county and some other agencies. So with that, I'd like to be able to use those skills to work at the higher level, I think, which will be very helpful for the Lake County Waters.
Hi, I'm Susan Feder, and I'm running in District Three. All three of us are running for different seats, so you don't have to pick your favorite amongst us three. My goals are water quality. I've already worked through the county on water quality issues before. I was possibly the first person in the counties to suggest that we needed a stronger fertilizer ordinance, and worked through environmental groups and the county commissioners to help get that passed through. I'm also very passionate about using the lands that the Water Authority has for the benefit of all the citizens, there's some great recreation. Keeping the waters and these lands in good shape and well-maintained is really important for all of our quality of life. So it's not just about the environment, the environment is, in Lake County, is all about our economy. So that's kind of my thing, is keeping the environment clean in Lake County to keep our economy going and our families' quality of life. If you take a look at the Lake County Economic Development website, the Water Authority needs to be supporting those points.
Thank you, Susan. You can hold on to the mic, we'll go the other way this time.
I haven't seen the questions before, so this'll be fun.
Oh, yeah. Well, if you prefer, we can start with Sean each time, since you haven't seen the question. That's more fair. So the second one of the advanced questions is, how can we improve people's experience with the lakes?
Okay, my wife would tell me, make sure there's no alligators. That would be a good start for improving the experience of the lakes. But no, first, what we have to do is make sure that they're clean, right? We have to make sure that we're protecting them, make sure they're not gonna get degraded, which we have worries with the way that we're gonna continue to develop. So one of the things that we need to do is continue to pursue partnership opportunities between the city and the Lake County Water Authority on these stormwater retrofit projects. And we have to aggressively pursue that, aggressively pursue funding with the state to fund those projects as well. There's many, many projects on that list that need to be done. We must also ensure that development is responsible, that we're asking the best, that has the highest standard, that's gonna protect our water resources. So we do that by asking the tough questions and not accepting everything, saying no sometimes. We promote access for all, all groups, not just one particular group or the other. When everybody has access to the lakes, then everybody's gonna have ownership, there's gonna be an ethic of conservation that's created. These sports, all sports, whether it be rowing, motorboating, fishing, if everybody has access to the lake and that access is promoted and encouraged, then everybody has ownership and the health of the lakes will improve.
So I'm born and raised here in Mineola, and I'm actually a seventh-generation Floridian. You can trace my family back to the late 1700s in the Panhandle. I volunteer many of my hours at Trail Lake Nature Center, actually, we do educational walks. And I think involvement and education with the youth can really, really open up a lot of people's eyes and really help them, help us out here in this community, you know? Because with these tours that I do, we get schools all over Lake County, I get elementary, middle, and high school students, and none of them have been out to the lakes. They don't know anything about the lakes, they don't go through the woods and walk, do anything out there. So if you have any, you know, I know we have the rowing, I know we have our dragon boats, but if we have anything else that can open up the eyes to the youth and get them out there, accessibility, that can really show a lot of people, it makes this county so special.
Well, I've put together, I probably have 40 different issues here, so I won't read them all.
Only one of it though.
I'll just talk about, I like to talk about specifics, because that's, you have to talk about specifics, because then if you're gonna solve an issue, you can solve that specific issue. And so I'm just gonna pick some things here. The dredging program that the Lake County Water Authority has is cleaning up waterways. They have dredged a lot of different areas, and funding goes to that. The, if you look, well, probably most of you didn't look at the budget, but I have, is that a lot of the work they do is projects. And they may be dredging a program, they may be giving a grant to a city for a stormwater retention pond, they may be coming up, they spend over $2 million just on chemicals that are used in the nutrient recycling facility, and reduction facility, and it's up in north county. Now, I've spent time looking to understand what are the issues down here, and I would like you to come to me afterwards, to talk about what your issues are on your channel lakes down here, because I didn't really see a lot. And they have a 47-page, five-year plan, and it lays out all of those things. And so, like I say, I can look at, use my skills in identifying the priorities in a rational manner, and then also see what we can do to probably get other funding, get it out of the county, get it out of the state, wherever we get it. Thank you.
Hi. My priorities, I think, being on the Water Authority, are really to continue the great mission. There's not a lot of room to criticize what the Water Authority does, they're a really strong organization. My priority is more and better contributing to the water quality. Keep the nerve plant running, the nutrient reduction facility, that's very important in the north end of the county. And also make sure that the grant money is available for stormwater reduction as the growth happens here in the south end of the county. And just to make sure that the Water Authority can continue to be responsive to the needs that are gonna be going on down here as more and more people come in, we've got Waldo's Way coming in, we've got a lot of needs to make sure that our lakes stay clean. So that's, just the clean water is my main priority.
Thank you, Susan. The last of the three advanced questions, then we'll throw it open for audience questions. The last one is, all right, Susan's gonna jump into the deep end there. She didn't get the questions in advance. The last here is, how would you balance economic growth with keeping Lake County beautiful?
That's a really good question, because as soon as you start talking about the environment, people go, oh my goodness, tree huggers, and, and don't hurt the, I just live out West, and don't hurt the spotted owls, and everyone's like, well, we gotta have the lumbermen working. There is really no other option here. This is one of our biggest economic focuses in this county, is the tourism, the bath tournaments, the kayak tournaments, the cycling, all of this stuff is important. And I don't know how many of you know how much you pay for the great work the Water Authority does? I don't have the average number, but I picked a random house in Groveland the other day and looked at it, and a person with $170,000 assessed house pays about $10.88 with the adjustments to the property tax, the home state exemption. So, you know, you're paying between like $20 and $30 a year, $10 and $20 a year for what the Great Worth of Water Authority does. So I think it's already pretty balanced.
Can you repeat the question? Sorry, I'm so excited I lost track of the question.
That happens to me all the time. The question is, how do you balance economic growth with keeping Lake County beautiful?
Well, I've watched the economic development programs grow here in the county, and they, part of their focus, and a subset of them called the Tourism Development Council, they are the ones that have the head and bed taxes on the hotels, and that money is used for projects in the county, and sometimes it's used for water-based projects. And so part of it is that when you get into these meetings, you see all these projects, and especially the five-year plan, a lot of people have already worked on, and you wanna implement those, you can look at that and safely find other funding sources. And economic development, actually, the Tourism Development Council might be one of the sources for that. I think that their focus, and what I've gone in the county board, Sean will say, is that a big part of their focus is developing tourism here and its sports space. This city is the city of, I was gonna say city of champions, that was the original motto that was proposed, but they emphasize having champions coming here, and sports facilities. And so there are programs that they have, that they run to get more sports in here, and in order to do that, you gotta have clean lakes, you gotta have facilities like boat ramps, and I was surprised to find, I think there's only one boat ramp in the south county area, and the one that they were all talking about earlier. There are more? Oh, there's two. Okay. So they added one after I read the article. Oh, three now. All right, so anyway, that's the kind of thing that you can work on.
Thank you.
So growth in Lake County, I mean, it's not stopping, it's really coming in, and that really goes hand in hand with our beauty here, you know? The two go hand in hand. People are coming out here because of the beauty in Lake County. They come out, you know, people are seeking an active lifestyle more and more, especially the younger generations, and they're looking for preserves, they're looking for parks, for trails, things to be doing outside, and, you know, I agree with what y'all said too, and it's just, you know, two really just go hand in hand, I really believe, and more parks, more preserves, and more trails, and more opportunity we have to get these people outside, the better we look.
So the question is, again, balancing growth and economic development. We have 1,000 people a day moving to Florida, 80,000 to 100,000 people are expected to come to Lake County over the next 10 years. We can be choosy with development, we can have a higher standard. That's what's gonna happen, that's what's gonna become upon your leadership in the coming years, to ask the fiscal analysis be done for development, so that when development's approved, 10 years down the road, it's not gonna cost my kids, your kids, cost us money and services that we're gonna have to provide. We need to, particularly in South Lake, we need to protect that green swamp. Green swamp is extremely important to the headwaters to our Claremont Channel Lakes. So I'm all about doing and working with partners that just, the cities, the cities of South Lake and the county, and the Water Authority, to do what we can do to protect the Lake County Water Authority, well, to protect them too, but, I'm sorry, protect the green swamp. I will also say, just let me add that, this is why leadership and experience is important and background qualifications. We have serious challenges that are coming in the coming, in the next four to five years. This is why experienced leadership will matter. Those that know Lake County, have 18 years, have lived in South Lake, and are Central Florida native, you know my technical background, you know that I'm out there. That matters, that accounts for something, and I hope you'll consider that.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks to all of you. Now, we're gonna have an opportunity for the audience to have a say. If you have any questions that you would like to ask our candidates here for the Water Authority or for the County Commission, please raise your hand, and Bob will bring the mic around. As before, all the same ground rules apply.
Thank you for coming tonight. Same for the preceding four people, but four people. But I'm a little confused. I think that I heard Susan say, oh, sorry, Jim Burvis, living Claremont. I'm a little confused, because I thought that I heard Susan say, we don't have to pick between any of the three of the Water Authority candidates, because you're all running for different seats. There's four seats. Does that, does that mean that you each have a candidate running for your seats as well? I think that it's really important to know that there are candidates running for our support and our vote that don't take the time to come out tonight. And Sean, that goes for your opponent as well. I think it's deplorable. Thank you.
I like the word deplorable.
So I guess, for the Lake County Water Authority people, can you just explain briefly how many seats there are and how many candidates there are, just so we know? Because I was talking earlier, and there's some confusion I have about it. So can you kind of, just between the three of you, kind of go over it a little bit for us?
Well, I've got the list of all the candidates here, so, like, I'm running for the at-large position, and I'm running against Jeremy Norton and Courtney Stokes. The incumbent, Adam Decusne, I can't pronounce his name, Decusne, he's not running again. And then, Casey, I think you're running against Joseph Trampas Bonjour. Okay? And then there's Alan Harris, who's also running for that seat. And of course, this is partisan, so you've got Republicans, in the primary, you're running for Republicans or Democrats. And then Susan, you're running against Carolyn Ramoni?
Yes. And to clarify, I appreciate your comment, and I ran in Water Authority in 2016, and my opponent never showed up, ever. This particular forum, there was a miscommunication. I had been invited to this in talking to people, but it turns out, I'm kind of not supposed to be here, but it's a miscommunication. So don't hold it against the people running against me, they were not invited.
All right. And just the last one is, there's Nicholas Stack, Doug Bryant, and Bush Hendrick, they're also running, they're not here.
So I wanna clarify as to who was invited and who wasn't. I think there was an error on our part in, we were a little confused about who would be on our ballots. So certainly, we invited all the candidates for the at-large position, and also for the district, which is Claremont-based district, but we failed to invite the other Water Authority candidate. So we didn't invite Susan and her, and her, the person who's running against her, but we did invite you two and your, the folks that you're running against, your opposition, I guess we would say. So I'm sure there's some reason why they're not here tonight, I don't think we can really get into that, but I do applaud those who made the time and fitted into their schedule to come and meet with us here in Claremont. So that, to me, that counts for a lot. Including Sean. Do we have more questions now?
In the back.
I know this lady.
Hi, my name's Libby Hannah, I live in Claremont. Anybody can answer this question, this can be kind of like Jeopardy, whoever wants to answer it can just jump up and answer it. And I'm not even sure this exactly... And I'm not even sure if it's exactly within the purview of Lake County Water Authority. Here's the question. I'm concerned very much, every time I see a new development go, I'm very concerned about where, what water are these people going to drink? And I had someone tell me recently, a disturbing fact, that it seems to be necessary now for municipalities to start drilling down to the second aquifer. So first of all, my question is, is that a fact? And second, if it is a fact, is it in fact disturbing? And if it is a disturbing fact, what are we gonna do about it?
You're the second act of the first guy, so go ahead.
Okay.
You used to be on the Lake County Water Authority.
I was, yes, I did serve on the Lake County Water Authority at one point. Water Authority, just maybe get them off the hook a little bit, is not focused as much on the consumption side, they're more on the water quality and the surface water resources. But I will tell you that something that, water, again, is something I'm very passionate about, was able to come in early on in my career in serving you, with establishing the Lake County Regional Water Initiative. I don't know if who's heard of that. That was a cooperative to get the cities of South Lake and Lake County, the utility companies, it's not just the cities and the county, we actually don't have any utilities, by the way, but it's the utility companies, all on the same page, everybody working together. And what we really, what we did, in a sense, was it took many years, a couple of years to do this, with St. John's, we came up with the consumption estimates, or calculations, if you will, estimating with the growth projections, how much water would be needed. And we affirmed and kind of locked arms that this is what we're gonna hold each other to, and St. John's said, "This is what we're gonna hold you to, this is how we will grant you your consumptive use permits in the future." Part of that, and it is true, the city of Claremont, through the South Lake Water Initiative that was started, was able to get a grant to do some deep, some lower aquifer, penetrating the lower aquifer to do, to put another well in, essentially, that water would be used, this is not the upper Floridian aquifer, this is the lower Floridian aquifer. So this is, you know, 12, 14, 1500 feet deep, if not deeper. I don't know the exact depth, but it is separated from the upper Floridian, which is where we get our drinking water, and feeds the lakes, and so on and so forth, there's a connection there at least. So there is water that is being withdrawn now from the lower Floridian, that would be primarily used for irrigation purposes, it could supplement reuse water. It would be, it could be, I don't know the quality, but it could be very expensive to treat, because it can be more salty, more saline. But it would be used for irrigation. And I'm really probably going off on a tangent, the Water Initiative is something that excites me, because the, I think it's been very good, the cities have picked that up, and they continue to run with it, and they're having their meetings to make sure that we are planning for water resource protection in the future. The other side of that is, we have to have conservation in place, we have to have conservation measures, we get, everybody, most of you know the number, that most of the water used, particularly from municipal supply, but the utilities as well, Utilities Inc., is used for irrigation of landscaping, right? 50% of it is? So new plans that are in place, the Wellness Way, the Wellness Way is gonna require that all landscape irrigation utilized non-holable resources. So it won't come from that upper Floridian aquifer, it'll come from stormwater collection, it may come, may be supplemented from the city of Claremont's reuse system, could come from, I've mentioned stormwater harvesting, it could also come, some could come from the lower Floridian as well. And that is all, how it all works together to protect the water resources. The lakes have been withdrawn some 15%, they estimate, these lakes are about 15% lower based off consumption, not just from us, but primarily, quite frankly, from Orange County. Remember, there's a million, 1,000.2 people over there that are withdrawing a lot of water, much more than us, from the same aquifer, but it has an effect on us here as well.
I could listen to you talk about that topic for an hour, but
Hit the hook.
But I'm gonna have to give you the hook. Is there anything that any of our Water Authority candidates need to add on that topic? Okay.
Because I go to a lot of city meetings, not down here, but I've been up in Mandora and Eustis and Tavares, one of the issues is that when a developer comes in, because the county doesn't have their own water pipe system, so they have to get the cities to run the water lines out there. If they are not in the city, they have to ask to be annexed in. And so when they do that, then they're gonna incur the cost somewhere to put that pipeline in and everything. Now, it varies by city, I don't know how they do it here in Claremont, but in some others, they mandate that the developer pays for those lines going out there. Then what happens is, everybody that's along that line, if they've got septic tanks, and a lot of county residents do, I don't, can I ask how many county residents here versus? Okay, so we just only have, most of your city then, so that won't apply, but for them, there's a real danger that all of a sudden, they're gonna be forced to have to connect to those pipelines for various issues. But, you know, the water supply, as these developments come online, Miniola has put a stop to development, because they've already got so many lots approved, that they don't want to get swamped with having to build more infrastructure.
We're maybe getting kind of this bit, I'm gonna see before they do, but, no, there's four main water agencies that you need to kind of understand what they all do, and they all do different things, and the water quality question, or the water quantity question is mostly answered by the St. John's River Water Management District, they're the permitting agency that allows people to pull up water, they're the ones that do all the science to try to figure out how much water is down there, and how many permits they can issue on that, and there's a lot of chaos, chaos is a bad word, there's a lot of controversy around that, and that is not a good purview of the Water Authority, though. So, but yes, it is a problem, we're running very low on water, and we need to try to figure it out.
Okay. I can see that we're getting towards the end of our evening here, and I want to make sure that we have time for those who are not in contested elections to at least come up and say a little something, but I think we have time for maybe one more question, if there is one.
Or a final statement? Opposing statement?
No, we're not doing opposing statements tonight, but I see there's a question up here.
Yes, I'll make it quick.
Take the mic.
Hey, I'm a fourth-generation native Claridian. I am no big fan of St. John's River Water Management, because I've gotten it wrong, and I was very thankful for the Water Authority, talked to Mr. Perry to come in and save our wetlands that we almost gave away here in Claremont to less citizens, including me, stood up. What do you think you can add to that, if you're on the Water Authority, to try, from your input and your votes, to try to deal with St. John's, to protect all of us? Because I'm serious, they've got it wrong too many times, they probably should be disbanded, as far as I'm concerned. So maybe we can change Tallahassee and get rid of them here before long, and we won't have this conversation, but God help us, if they all get reelected up there, what are we gonna do?
I know, a big question.
That is a really good question. Those folks are appointed by the governor, so they're, they don't get reelected, they get appointed by the governor. There's been some discussion about seeing if those positions should be elected, I don't know for sure that that would help, I think they'd end up with a lot of developer money in the elections then, so appointed by the governor probably is the best. There's about 14 counties in our Water Management District, and there's only seven, nine seats on there, so there's not anybody from Lake
St. John's.
St. John's, yeah, St. John's. There's not anybody from all of the counties, and so it's hard to get them to be concerned about each of the counties. So maybe there, there is something that could be suggested about that. Unfortunately, none of that is really under the purview of the Water Authority, just like what you saw when Mike Perry came into the Claremont City Council meeting, he was an advisor, he was adding input, but he was not a decider in any of those. And so the Water Authority, unfortunately, is local surface water quality issues, and they don't have a lot of input, other than to be informed, educated, opinionated, and hopefully respected by the elected or appointed officials they're speaking to.
Lake County Water Authority does not have any regulatory or enforcement authority. So that means they can encourage other agencies to do things, but they can't just go out there and arrest somebody, or find them, or anything else, which is, I think is unfortunate. And I agree with her, and probably anybody else like you, about the St. John's River Water Management District, because I've observed just at least three different times when they just arbitrarily changed the water levels in the Harris chain, and that has greatly affected people, and sometimes without warning. And the point is, one of my views is that if I'm elected, that I'm gonna use the position as a bully pulpit, to try and lobby to make sure that Lake County does have a position on that board. Because I brought that up, we found out, oh, about three, four years ago, there was a vacancy, and the governor didn't appoint somebody from Lake County, we had an applicant, but instead he appointed somebody else, and I've been told by two different insiders that it's because high-dollar contributors are the ones that are put on the list for getting that. 10 seconds! And so that's the issue, and I want to work towards trying to get us a stronger voice with the St. John's.
Okay. Now, could I see, before we wrap up with our county officials here, I'd just like to see a show of hands of those who are candidates for uncontested elections, because we're gonna give you a chance to talk in a minute.
I'm a contestant.
Oh, you're in a contested election? Well, we're still gonna let you. So any other candidates here, running for office, who haven't had a chance to say anything? No? Just Judge Barbie? Okay. Then I was asked whether it would be possible for these folks to just make some sort of closing remark, and given we've got seven minutes left, I think we should let them have a minute each to do a closing remark.
Okay. Thank you. How about this, it's not even so much as necessarily a closing remark, but just what I think is gonna be important for you to remember, just a couple of things that have been touched on. This intergovernmental coordination is extremely important. There's a lot of savings, there's a lot of efficiencies to be had out there by your county government working with the Water Authority, your county government working with the cities. So, you know, the challenge is gonna be, when you're looking for candidates, is look for ones that are open to those partnerships, and looking for, you know, looking for the opportunities to explore those, to explore the things that are gonna all save us money, and are gonna be better for the county, and they're out there right now. I do think that also, as we go into, again, with the challenge of the population, that growth that's coming, we're gonna have roads, and we're gonna have to work together to solve those road issues. I heard some of what the questions were earlier on about that, and that goes hand in hand with working, growth causes needs and increases for new construction and roads, so we have to work together between the city and the county. So, thank you very much, and it's been a privilege and an honor to be able to serve you, and I, of course, would be remiss without asking, hopefully, I've been able to earn your vote on August 28th.
What position are you running for?
The County Commission, Lake County Commission District Two, right here in South Lake.
Not in Water District?
Not in Water, though.
I mean, I'm a District Two, right here, Miniola, passionate native, I grew up here, I bled here, I've slaved these lakes my entire life, I was lucky enough to live on one of these lakes for most of my life. I'm just gonna do my best, if I get in there, to run with the Lake County Water Authority, and continue to make these decisions, you know, best decisions for our community, and I think they've done that in the past, and I want to continue to do that with them.
Well, thanks for listening to us, all of us, and I just want to solve problems, that's what my whole professional career has been about, identifying and or solving problems, or at least recommending solutions. And so, the way I look at it is, that there is a whole lot of different projects that this Water District does, and that I want to learn how those all affect the county and the waterways, and then work at prioritizing them, and then also working on legislative issues, or working with the county, or other agencies, to get either funding or cooperation to get improvements in those. And so I ask for your vote, I'm running for the at-large position.
Again, my name is Susan Federer. I want to say that I'm excited about the opportunity to possibly serve on the Water Authority. I'm a Lake County native, well, if you count moving here in '8, my parents owned a business on the Lake Griffin, and so my whole life I observed how the water quality, water quantity affects the day-to-day life of the citizens here. Then I left the area for a career in high tech, and I have a lot of experience in high tech, from solving problems based on differing needs of differing groups, and trying to come to consensus about that. Since I've been back here, I've been serving on the Lake Soil and Water Conservation District. And what we do there involves contracts and relationships with the NRCS, the Florida Department of Agriculture, the St. John's River Water Management District, and we operate with an interlocal agreement from the county government. So I've had a lot of experience dealing with all these different water agencies. Also, I understand the importance of this, this is my prop, I'm the only candidate with a proper, I was in 2016, this is a chunk of a flora aquifer, and protecting this is important for protecting our county, so stop by and talk about it, if you want to know why our oarlock is important in Lake County.
Thank you to all of the candidates who have been up here, to Sean, to Casey, to Vance, and to Susan, for coming tonight and answering all of our questions. They will be hanging around afterwards, so take the time to come up and talk with them. All right, we're gonna let them sit down, and I just want to put out this slip of paper, which is available at the front desk, includes a list of all those who are here tonight, with the exception of Susan Federer, through our omission, she was not invited, and so we left her off in our list, but that's handy. It also has the dates for the primary election, as well as early voting, and information about how you can vote by mail. That's gonna be especially important in the general election, when there'll be like an eight-page ballot with all these constitutional amendments, you don't want to be waiting in line for that during the general election, so set yourself up to vote by mail. All right, now we're gonna have, Don Barbie's gonna come up.
Very good.
And, Don, let's give you two minutes for Don.
Oh, good. We'll be really quick. Everybody, my name's Don Barbie, I am not a Judge Jep and Steve, I appreciate the optimism, that's for sure. August 28th, it is on the ballot, I'm running for Circuit Judge. You will never see me again, you will never appear in front of me, so why am I here? Because the entire circuit, and you get to vote, it's almost like hiring somebody for somebody else's company, but that's what this is all about. So Lake, Marion, Citrus, Sumter, and Hernando, all vote for this Fifth Circuit Judge, the seat is going to be in Brooksville, so you will, again, probably never see me, never appear in front of me, but I'm here anyway. My name's Don Barbie, I started my career as a police officer, I was an FBI agent, I was a prosecutor, I was a civil litigator for a while, and right now, I am the clerk of the Circuit Court in Hernando County. You're Neil Kelly, you guys have Neil, right? Actually, Neil just retired, I believe, but I am that role, I'm the elected clerk over there, so I'm the one that listens to all of the problems people have about judges. They commit a complaint to me and my staff that their traffic ticket's too expensive, that their foreclosure's not moving fast enough through the system, why can't I get a hearing for my divorce date? So we get to hear all that stuff, so it puts me in kind of a unique position. I've also been a Florida lawyer for 19 years, so I definitely have the experience, and the reason, really, the reason I'm here tonight is, don't leave a blank. I'd rather have you vote for my opponent than leave a blank, I would, because this shows me you educated yourself. You're obviously out here tonight to educate yourself about the candidates, which I really do appreciate. Cool night out here, thank you guys so much for putting it on. Remember Don Barbie on August 28th, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, man, thanks for coming, thanks for having me table. Now I think we have a few closing remarks from our president, Steve Franklin. They're having too much fun back there at the back table, so as soon as he finishes talking, you could go join them and have some fun back there. And don't forget to stop up front, we have a few refreshments left as well.
Absolutely. I want to thank everybody that took the time to come out tonight. In a town area of over 40,000 people within 15 miles, you guys cared enough to come out tonight. That's important. I wish we could pack the room, I wanted to see 150 people standing there only.
Next year.
Next year, maybe? We need to find ways, again, this is the goal of our foundation, to find ways to get people interested in being involved, and making decisions, and seeing what government is doing. So again, I want to thank all the candidates that came out tonight. I personally have learned quite a bit about, little tidbits here and there, about who does what, and who's pointing a finger at who, and that sort of thing. And that influences my decisions coming in the next couple of months for elections. And all you people, again, thank you so much for coming out tonight. This is one of our first events for a new This is one of our first events for a new foundation. We intend to go forward in the future. We intend to do promotion of sports. Again, we have signed on as a sponsor for the Cardboard Vote Regatta. We are helping by listening and transferring information from youth groups such as the Rowing Club and the Sailing Club, transferring information on their needs to the city council. So please consider supporting our foundation. Little tidbits of money help a lot, because we don't spend a lot. Most of what we do is advocacy. But even to do an event like tonight costs a little bit of money. And we would appreciate your support as we go forward and try to do the best we can for the Claremont area and our chain of lakes. Thank you all once again.